Call the meeting to order, rule call.
Mr. Merritt?
Here.
Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. DeBoer?
Here.
Mrs. Filippa?
Here.
Mrs. Hargan-Rader?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Dr. Pickering?
Here.
Mr. Rose?
Here.
Mrs. Silvas?
Here.
Please stand for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its public participants in this one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice of executive session, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, student discipline from six P M. to eight, six-ten P M., then potential litigation Title IX regulations from eight P M. to eight fifteen P M. Other comments regarding the agenda of May twenty-fourth, nobody had signed up. Student representatives to the board, we have Cochrane Junior Senior High School, Libby Bolton and Nathan Hine.
Hi there, it's good to be back. Starting with sports, Cochrane and baseball's team is seven and eleven overall and is sixth in the district. The boys had their first playoff game against West Middlesex at Teal College today at one P M.
The softball team is ten to four overall, making them third in the district. They will also be playing Western Middlesex on May twenty-second. The place and time is to be determined.
Our boys volleyball team ended their regular season with a record of fifteen and fourteen. They won their first game of playoffs against Cambridge Springs and will be playing at Allegheny College against Sacred Town for the District Ten semifinals.
Cochrane's prom was held at Hotel Conia on May third and Nathan was crowned prom king while Jordan Beeden was crowned prom queen. The spring concert was held last Wednesday at seven P M. where the junior and senior high band and chorus performed. On June first at seven P M., Mr. Miller will be holding the final concert of his career where he will be conducting many songs from previous shows during his time at C H S and it will be played by current and past members of the marching band.
Our school participated in the twenty-twenty-four Berg Bash competition at Robert Morris University on May seventeenth and eighteenth. Two teams placed twenty-fifth while the other two teams placed ninth and fifth. Our third-year BOTS team won tenth in documentation. Volunteers from our school's chapter of the National Honor Society will be going to Cochrane Community Church to supervise a fun day for the preschool students on the twenty-third.
Students in the National Honor Society will be volunteering at the Community Superhero Day at our elementary school on the thirty-first.
Cochrane's graduation ceremony will be held on June sixth where Tander Shear will be speaking on behalf of the class of twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you. Meadville Senior High School, Lillian Hill, Sidney Holt and Sophia Shaw.
Good evening, since this is our last meeting as the Mash School Board Representatives, we want to thank you all for this opportunity you have given us. We enjoy being a part of these meetings every month.
We want to introduce the new Mash Representatives for the twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five school year who are here with us today. We have Elliot Schleicher, Kendall Mealy and Cole Sobuleski.
The boys lacrosse had a great season finishing. The regular season went seven to two and they're going on to play in the D-ten semifinals this week.
Girls lacrosse ended their season last Friday with a loss against Cache.
The boys volleyball team has had an incredible end to the regular season and an even better start to the District Ten play. They have a conference record of nine to zero and won their first round playoff game against Rocky Grove this past Saturday.
The tennis team had their last match on May seventh against Oil City. They closed out with a record of two to six.
This last weekend, the track team had districts at Slippery Rock University. The regular season has ended, but Nick Williams, Peyton Costello, Megan Paley and Elena Wilson-Dixon have all been moving, will all be moving to states.
The baseball team finished fourth in the Region Five with an overall record of fourteen to six. They will head to playoffs next week to play Grove City. The game will be held at Allegheny College at two P M.
The softball team ended their regular season with a record of fourteen to three and as co-region five champs for the first time since two thousand and five. The girls earned the two seed in the District Ten playoffs and will play the winner of the Warren and Hickory game on Thursday, May twenty-third.
The National Honor Society has elected new officers for next year. Current senior members will be volunteering at the Special Olympics event at the fairgrounds this Wednesday. Key club members will also be volunteering at this event.
Student government officers for the next school year have been elected. Ben Feeley will be the new student body governor with Mason Hook as lieutenant governor, Natalie Smith as secretary and Joshua McMichael as the treasurer.
Prom was held on Saturday, May eleventh at the Oaks of Ben Hall and had an incredible turnout. Jenna Boska and Luca White won prom king and queen.
Graduation will be held on June sixth at six P M. on Bender Field. The guest speaker is Elizabeth Spatafor and we are excited to have her.
That's all we have for today and once again, thank you for this opportunity. We hope you all have a wonderful summer.
Thank you. Meadville Middle School is not here. Approval of the minutes resolved that the board of school directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following minutes, the regular board meeting of April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, special board meeting of April twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, and the committee of the whole meeting of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Holly.
Any discussion of questions? If not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carry. Committee reports curriculum, Tammy.
Approval of the graduating classes of twenty-twenty-four for Meadville Area Senior High School and Cochranton Junior Senior High School, resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the graduating classes of twenty-twenty-four for Meadville Area Senior High School and Cochranton Junior Senior High School. I so move.
Is there a second? Monica? Questions or discussion? If not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carry.
Approval of the agreement for school-based peer support group for grieving children and adolescents, resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the agreement for school-based peer support group for grieving children and adolescents with the caring foundation. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Monica? Any discussion of questions? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carry. Extracurricular, Holly.
It resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the Cochrane Junior Senior High School Yearbook Club to participate in the varsity yearbook summer camp in Scranton, Pennsylvania, August eighth through the eleventh at a cost to the district of one thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars and please see attachment six and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ed? Any discussion of questions? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries. Technology. Approval of the Cisco Enterprise Service Agreement, resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the Cisco Enterprise Service Agreement and that is attachment seven on the agenda and I so, I need a motion. Monica? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carry. Buildings and grounds, Ron.
Approval of the Third Amendment to lease agreement, resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the Third Amendment to lease agreement with Family and Community Christian Association Incorporated for a period of June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four through June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, attachment eight, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Holly? I will be abstaining due to employment reasons. So any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Abstentions, aye. Motion carry. Finance, Jeff.
Result of the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following financial activities, the treasurer's report for April, financial statements and the payment of bills and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Holly? Any discussion or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carry.
Need to elect a treasurer for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five and I nominate Michaela Gibson as treasurer for the Crawford Central School District for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-four through and including June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Monica? Is there a second to close? Ron? We're now voting on to close the nominations for treasurer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carry.
I move to elect Michaela Gibson as treasurer for Crawford Central School District for the period of July first, two thousand twenty-four through and including June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Monica? Any question or discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
The tentative adoption of the fiscal general budget, fund budget. It resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves and adopts the school district's two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five proposed final budget. It further resolved that the Board of School Directors directs its business manager to make the school district's two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five proposed final budget available to the public for inspection later in June fourth, two thousand twenty-four. It further resolved that the school district directs its business manager to give public notice of the board's intent to adopt the proposed final budget as the annual budget of the school district at least ten days prior to the date of the adoption of the annual budget by the board. It further resolved that the Board of Directors intends to adopt the school district's two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five annual budget at its June twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four meeting and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Holly? That's what I mentioned, this is the same budget that was presented at the committee meeting and there, the administration is working on lowering it from that point five-seven to whatever that magic number's going to be. But we do have to have a tentative adoption of a budget tonight in order to fulfill these obligations that we have to with the state and Austin's obligations under his duties as a business manager. Any other comments or questions?
I would suggest that we take and make a glossary of terms for some of this stuff. I know when you start looking at the like budget transfers and anything like that for the public to look at it, there's some of the things that just do not make sense. So you know, I think going forward whenever you know there's something that is not a standard name, I mean, I understand, you know, salaries, that makes sense, but you know, whenever you have some of these other terms and red cap being one of them.
Well, reading materials was another.
Yeah, yeah, there's several of them. I think we need a glossary of terms just so we have some more transparency for the public.
Any other comments? If not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same?
No.
Motion carry, eight to one.
Result that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves Schedule L budgetary transfers and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Holly? Any discussion or questions? If not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carry.
Result that pursuant to Act thirty-two of two thousand eight, the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby appoints Austin Stofran, business manager, as the tax collection committee primary voting delegate for the Crawford Central School District and further resolved that Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby appoints Patricia Kidd, assistant business manager, as the tax collection committee alternate voting delegate for the Crawford Central School District and further resolved that the primary voting delegate cannot attend a tax collection committee meeting, then the alternate voting delegate shall attend the tax collection committee meeting. The reappointment of Mr. Stofran and the appointment of Ms. Kidd as delegates are effective immediately and shall continue until their successors are appointed. Delegates shall be appointed or reappointed by the board each year. All delegates shall serve at the pleasure of the board and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Monica? Discussion or questions? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carry.
Result that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby accepts the following grants, the mental health grant for a hundred and forty-two thousand ninety-seven dollars, a school safety and security grant for four hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and a school safety cameras grant for forty thousand dollars and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ed?
Yep.
Any question or discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carry.
It resolved that the Crawford Central School District, Crawford Mercer Counties hereby requests a public school facility improvement grant of up to five million dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the replacement of roof boilers, air handling units, HVAC and fire alarm system at East Neeson Hill Elementary School. It further resolved that the applicant does hereby designate Jennifer Aggaltin and Austin Stofran as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the Crawford Central School District and Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Or Holly, sorry, Holly. Any question or discussion? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Question, so this states that it's for Neeson Hill solely. Is there any stipulations if we are approved for that grant that that school would need to be open for a certain period of time? Anything along those lines if the grant is accepted?
I am agreeing with going ahead with this grant, but I just am upset with how we got here, that there was no discussion. This was kind of thrown at the board, this is supposed to be a committee of ten and you know, I'm used to looking at pros and cons of things and having actual discussions and not being, the board being dictated that this is what we're going to do. So I hope going forward that we have more discussions on the direction that we are, we plan on going with the district.
Any other comments or discussion? If not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carry. Personnel, Jan.
It resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the addendum with E S S Northeast LLC and see attachment fourteen and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Holly? Any question or discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carry.
It resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby appoints Dr. Ryan Pickering and Mrs. Tammy Silvas as voting delegates for the Pennsylvania School Boards Association Delegate Assembly on November second, twenty twenty-four and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ed? Any discussion or questions? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carry.
It resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the waiver and stipulation involving student E and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Holly? Any discussion or questions? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carry.
It resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following personnel schedules, A, C, D, E, G, H, I and M. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Monica? Question or discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carry. Administration, Dr. Gell.
I just wanted to recognize our class act. Students, April's month was Kristen McGarvey from Cochranton Junior Senior High School and Mays is Ben Hilson from Meadville Area Senior High School.
Other public board comments?
Looking at the feasibility study, you know, Cochrane Elementary School, the site area lists as twenty-three-point-three acres and we kept hearing there's more than that, more than that, more than that. So we jumped on the GSI mapping and there is another seventy-acre lot down there as part of Cochrane. That's a separate deed, but it's still part of Cochrane or Crawford Central's and it's almost all wooded. And again, I'm going to say that we need to hire forester to look at this stuff. You know, we got Neeson Hill, West End and Cochrane. There's a substantial amount of money there that's in those trees. I would suggest that we take and hire the forester. If we do agree to do this foresting, that money be put into investments and then we work on a regular basis. I know that you can specify specifics as to, you know, what trees you want, if you want certain trails, you know, created, maintained, whatever afterwards, the cleanup, you could specify all that in the contract and then the forester takes and handles all that for you. The other thing is, as we've been doing the building tours, Kevin was looking for a specific set of steps that's in the feasibility study in the picture and we couldn't find it. So just as before, when we found in the original draft that there is not equipment in some of these buildings they listed, now we're questioning whether all the pictures that are in this feasibility study indeed are at the schools. I personally would suggest that maybe Kevin and I meet with each of the building managers and go through these and see what we find out, see if, how accurate this feasibility study actually is. And then on to another thing. Since several members of the public have spoken out since our April fifteenth meeting at the Mash Auditorium, I figure it was my turn to speak. I do not believe that Joe Tompkins has been to a school board meeting since he wasted nearly an hour of everyone's time parading the Connect fifty-five residence into complaint about tax credits that were never taken. So I was curious as to why he was at that meeting. For those of you that don't know who Joe Tompkins is, he is a socialist Allegheny College professor that last I knew has, even runs a socialist club on campus and he does not recite the pledge of allegiance at public meetings. You may be wondering why this is important. Our solicitor Knox Law is also a solicitor for the city of Meadville. Joe Tompkins is believed to be the puppet master for the Meadville City Council. In fact, Joe Tompkins was instrumental in writing the rental registration inspection program. The city then adopted it potentially without following proper procedure. So where am I going with this? Our solicitor openly indicated at a public meeting that if we update our Title IX policies, we could open the district up to potential lawsuits. These statements are usually reserved for executive session, but Rachel did not, she said publicly. Joe Tompkins then paraded what she said in front of the news cameras. He even added that based on the budget, the district couldn't afford a lawsuit. Here's where it gets interesting. The city of Meadville is near bankrupt and if the Pennsylvania Supreme Court upholds the lower court's ruling that stormwater fees are unconstitutional, that could possibly push the city over the edge. The city was told if they pursued the rental registration inspection program, they would be sued. Knox Law encouraged them to move forward anyhow. Even though the county was willing to negotiate, Knox Law encouraged the city to sue the county for a tax reassessment. That's right, two taxing bodies that survive primarily on tax dollars suing each other. So no matter who wins, the taxpayer loses. So where am I, so where I'm sitting, it appears that if you are trying to extract more money from the taxpayers, lawsuits are okay. Or if you want to invade a person's constitutional right to a peaceful enjoyment to their home, lawsuits are okay. However, when it comes to protecting our children, lawsuits are too costly. Now, I don't know how much is too costly for most people to protect their children, but I'm pretty sure my family knows I'd give my life to protect them. So let's talk about Title IX. I had parents and or grandparents reach out to me with concerns of biological boys and biological girls roaming together on overnight trips. When I asked Dr. Gallon about it, I was told per Title IX, I was not permitted to have that information. When I looked up section one-twenty-one of the Crawford Central Policy on Trips, under guidelines, item one states, quote, "The safety and well-being of students shall be protected at all times," end quote. I'm interpreting that as emotional, psychological and physical. Therefore, without a Title IX policy change, I personally do not believe we as school board members can fulfill the district's policy obligations. Furthermore, I looked up the definition of grooming. I found a fact sheet on a dot gov website. One of the definitions of grooming, quote, "Erode the child's or young adult's boundaries," end quote. I would like someone to explain to me how forcing a teen or pre-teen to use a restroom or undress in a locker room with biologically opposite sex teen or possibly adults present is not the very definition of grooming. The last I knew, twenty-six states and several schools are suing the Biden administration over the latest revision of Title IX. So I'm sticking with my first thought of chromosome-based policy and to address Ryan's concern at the meeting, we can have some mixed-use bathrooms. My final thought on this, I don't know what price you put on your children's safety, but I hope you never have to have a talk with them where they ask, "Why didn't you protect me?" And you have to tell them because I didn't think you was worth it. Thank you.
Kevin, I'd love so like to speak, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. In December of twenty twenty-one, I made the following oath. I, Holly Chapman, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Pennsylvania and will faithfully discharge the duties of the school director to the best of my ability. I then began my term as school board member, as did all of my peers that sit on the board with me on their own respectful dates. Amendment one of the nineteen-seventy-one of the United States Constitution reads as follows. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or the right of the people peacefully to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. Amendment fourteen, section one, June thirteenth, nineteen eighteen-eighty-six, also reads as follows. All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and of the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty or property without due process of law or nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws. Title IX is a federal law that was passed in nineteen seventy-two to ensure that male and female students and employees in educational settings are treated equally and fairly. It protects against discrimination based on sex, including sexual harassment. Title IX has been a topic of discussion lately and I would like to respectfully remind this community and board of the oath that we as board members swore to uphold, which includes, according to our United States Constitution, that Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion. It forbids Congress from both promoting one religion over others and also restricting an individual's religious practices. Further, Title IX correlates with the Fourteenth Amendment prohibits institutions that receive federal funding from excluding students from participating in educational and athletic programs based on sex. That includes us as board members from enacting or passing any policies that go against the United States Constitution and its subsequent amendments. Hopefully, it has pushed this discussion to rest and assures the Crawford Central community that we have policies in place that abide by the Constitution of the United States and the amendments to the Constitution and Title IX. I take my oath to this board seriously and plan to ensure the constitutional rights of all of our students are upheld without political, religious or personal beliefs, but rather with dignity and abiding by the laws of our country that were set forth by our Constitution. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, it's on a different topic though. So I had attended the vocational technical school board meeting and there was a surplus list provided, so any sending schools were able to look at the list, state if they wanted any of the items. There were some tools, I saw a CNC mill, a grinder, didn't know if any of our schools had used those, I think Cochrants are a little outdated. They were listed to be in fair condition or good, so I didn't know if that was something that was passed along to the necessary individuals, but just wanted to make sure it was because some of those items could be useful.
Sure, they were probably passed on between, someone probably got them to look at.
I'd like to make your comment. Yeah, first of all, Title IX was enacted by a legislature, but all the recent changes in the guidelines and so forth, they're changed on a regular basis and they're not enacted by a legislature. Obama changed the guidelines, Trump changed the guidelines, Biden changed the guidelines. If we have a new administration in November, they're probably going to change the guidelines. As far as the First Amendment, it does, as Holly mentioned, the Constitution prevents the free practice of one's religion. Just recently, I think it was just in the past few days, there was a woman that was fired from her position in the school district because she refused to use the students' preferred pronouns on religious grounds, that was her objection. Now, that's not always the reason someone might object to doing. was her objection. Now, that's not always the reason someone might object to doing so, but we have the right to free speech, and being compelled to speak in a certain way is not part of that free speech. In this case, the woman was willing to make concessions. She was willing to either, you know, be employed in an area of the school where she wasn't going to have to be around those students so that she would, you know, be feeling forced to use their pronouns, or she was willing to use just their name as it was in the register of the school. She was fired outright instead of giving any right to a concession, and she sued that school district and got a judgment for $360,000. So, if we're worried about being sued by somebody over their objections to a policy that we have regarding Title IX, well, we may get a suit from the people that object to the Title IX regulations and guidelines as they stand, you know, either on religious grounds, free speech grounds, or any other number of grounds. So, I just want to point out that it's not all one way where we're going to get sued by people that are in favor of these changes to Title IX.
Any other comments?
I would like to thank the elementary schools that participated last week in the Farm Safety Day up at the Fairgrounds. Folks put that on, put a lot of work into it, and I think the kids got a lot out of it. So, I want to thank the teachers for, and the building administrators for participating.
Any other comments?
Yeah, can I, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead. Go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, I just want, yeah, I just wanted to say that, that the policy to protect students includes trans students, and so this whole conversation feels like it's harming our trans students, and so I just wanted to say that out loud.
Okay. Any other comments? Not, is there a motion for adjournment? Monica? Is there a second?
Second.
Ron? Any discussion or comments on the journey? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Hereby adjourned.